Mayor, you doing this tonight? October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Hit man.
Good afternoon, we'd like to call, call your attention to the council meeting, or last that. Uh, Captain Cooper would give us a word, if it takes.
And Father, we thank you for all that you bestowed upon us in this day. There, Father, we thank you for everything that you blessed us with. I there only, Father, we ask that you be with this council and this town and the members that's here, as well as to represent, Father, you stay of me, Father, that is me according to your will, there of me, Father. And there of me, Father, even bless Aliceville as well to the people. In your son's be the sole and precious name, amen.
Thank you, Captain. We got opportunity to review your meeting. Are there any questions about the meeting minutes?
Are there any questions about the? Not, I'm gonna entertain a motion too. We on meeting minutes, we'll get to that. Are there any questions about the meeting minutes? Been moved to a meeting minutes, and council members, we have two sets of meeting minutes that we have the special call meeting, and the meeting minutes from the previous council meeting. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the opinion of the chair, ayes have it, the motion carries, meeting minutes passed. Are we on the unfinished business? Item number one, renovation of city hall, kitchen, and bathroom. We contract, we located a contractor, Miss Strickland, not Miss Strickland, yes, Ms. Aljean Strickland is working with the contractor, and they should have designed the concepts done hopefully this week, so that way we can go ahead with that process, so we don't lose out on the grant money. Are there any questions about that? Alright. I'll leave that on there until we get that processed. Uh, two, under unfinished businesses, the bid for the road project, bid for the road project. The city of Aliceville has put out a bid for a road project to complete all of the, to complete all of the roads in Aliceville. Um, part of that price includes engineering fees. Uh, we're collaborating with the Gus Board to help fund some of this project. And I think it's in good order for the city for to pay for the bidding portion of this project. There is a thirty, uh, there's a design and bidding process that has to be done, and that process for the entire city is thirty thousand dollars. So what we're asking is that we put fifteen thousand towards our, from our COVID- nineteen funds, towards this project, so that way we can show, um, some earnest in getting our road project completed. Again, this is towards the larger of the in excess of three million dollar project paid by the city of Aliceville. Are there any questions about that? Alright, is there none? I entertain a motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the bidding for the road project. Are there any other discussion items?
Uh.
Go ahead.
How many? What was this? Before we don't get no, how long ago? When we had closed, if nobody don't bid?
It'll be somebody to bid on.
I'm looking at, you don't follow coming up, one time coming up.
The project won't be done before.
I hear what I'm saying, so there ain't no connection.
No, the bid, the bid is significant enough, it's a three, in excess of three million dollar bid, somebody gonna bid. Companies that are in our area, somebody's gonna bid on it. So, you don't have to worry about that, we just have to get the figures, fees, and all that to the customer, so that way they know what they're bidding on.
Okay, thank you.
Now, my, our goal is hoped by the summer of twenty-two to have, have this project completed. Any other discussion? Alright, now we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the opinion of the chair, ayes have it, the motion carries. Item number three, Mike Reno for advancing city hall. Councilwoman Ball, I'm with you.
Okay, uh, upon my search board, uh, Mike, and, can y'all hear pretty good? Uh, Mike, uh, um, and, think that the city hall, I went to or inquired Jerry's Music, and that's in Columbus, Mississippi, the last, uh, equipment farm, and, uh, a, the pay bay, sixty-five hundred head, three hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cent, uh, very good, uh, system. Uh, it has blue, uh, uh, record CD or something like that. You can just basically, um, connect it with your phone and, um, you know, do, do the connectivity from there. Also, so that, that came up to three ninety-nine ninety-five for that head. Uh, and also, I didn't do the cordless mic, this time I, I went with, uh, corded mics. And the corded mics, uh, you can get four corded mics at the price for one of twenty-nine ninety-five, I think it was. Uh, I quoted four, so that came up to a hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-six cents. Um, the total for both of those, three ninety-nine, ninety-nine, and one nineteen ninety-six, came up to a total of five hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Uh, so it was kinda like down under, you know, what we, uh, projected to, uh, spend. I did not, I did not include the cords to go from the speaker to the head. So you probably looking at about twenty-five or thirty more dollars, uh, with that. So, we still, like I said, at five nineteen ninety-five, you know, with a, around roughly six hundred dollars is kinda gone, where we gonna be at in that range. And, uh, this is a good, a good head. Um, it's a good head, I've, I've, I have one, well, I'm unfamiliar with it, I've, I've used mine. So, uh, that's where we are, and I have the, I have, I told him to, you know, get the information to, so he sent it screenshot, um, so you can, we can go from there.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ball, for your hard work. But, as a reminder for those who may not be aware, we're trying to get a microphone system for the outside portion, so that way we don't have to use our council microphone system when it needs to be used. The budget that we have set was under six hundred dollars, which is what this, uh, what Councilwoman Ball has came up with. So that being said, I think it's in good order to go ahead and make the purchase, so we can get it fixed. What, uh, so I entertain a motion, or we can have a discussion. Councilwoman, Councilman.
Oh, that's good, good research, but did you check for anyone else? If the Jerry Mike, I could check for another company?
No, I, I, I mean, basically, uh, basically, when you get into, when you get into speaker head, pay bay, pay bays is a top brand, um, head, and for three ninety-nine, you, you do not afford six hundred, you know, watt, pay bay head. And I understand about, I mean, if you want me to check somewhere else, I could, but you, you're gonna be looking at, uh, only other place is Eat My Beats, which is in Tuscaloosa, and then you have a place in Starfield, um, that you basically can't go unless you're gonna branch out to Birmingham, and, you know, so I, I don't know how pressing this is, or do you want more time, or, you know, you know?
The reason I was asking you.
I mean, only six hundred dollars.
You look right, you know, you at least try two different places, like insurance company, you style it, go for it, try three different places. I said, like, you know, yeah, Jerry probably, probably not, right? I don't know, but legal fine on what?
As long as it's under ten thousand dollars, you don't have to, so. It is legal, and I think the last time we went, the cheapest place, but if you wanna, if you wanna do somewhere, I, I'll allow you, council member, to bring it up, and then we'll hold off on it until the next council meeting, and you can bring those speakers from over there, will that work?
Yeah.
Alright, that'll work. So, we'll move on. Uh, new bid list tractor, is that alright with the council? Alright, move on to new business, item number one, tractor and cutter. Um, as we've been trying to get, uh, just to update everybody on the situation, we have a tractor and a cutter that's down. Um, that's been part of the reason why we've been unable to cut our ditches, uh, in some of the city. We've been working on this project for quite some time, and Alabama bid law, uh, process, these two companies, Sun South and HR Agri Power are on the Alabama bid list, so that, uh, require, that allows us to get those tractors off of them, because they went through the state requirements, as far as the business goes. Uh, we vetted it down, and in order to get our, uh, from Sun South, the tractor that we're looking at is a tractor with a cab, with the sidearm, and that's gonna call, uh, from Sun South, that same tractor is a John Deere, is gonna be eighty-seven thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars. And that's from Sun South. From HR, H and R Agri Power, is eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. So it's not much of a difference. However, uh, Sun South is willing to accept our trade-in, um, at a price of nine thousand dollars. Uh, so we can take nine thousand off of this price for Sun South. And H and R Agri Power did not, would not give us a, uh, trade-in value on the, on the John Deere tractor. Also, no one in America can get tractors, because everything is on surplus. So the equipment that we're gonna get, the tractor is February, if we're able to get it in February. However, I'm working with them to try to see if we can lease out our old tractor after they fix it, so that way we're able to utilize it this winter, get some ditches cut, February comes, we'll have our tractor. So that being said, it's my recommendation from, uh, to the council, based on the fact that we're saving nine thousand dollars, we'll be, and, uh, and we'll be getting a tractor, uh, interim, in the interim, so we can go ahead and do some work that is needed, that we move with the bid for Sun South, in amount of eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, um, with the trade-in of our old John Deere two thousand eight four-wheel drive cab tractor. Uh, and that will bring that total down to seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. And this funds, where we'll be getting this from, will be our COVID- nineteen funds, because we can't use that for infrastructure, uh, because that impedes the flow of the water around Aliceville, uh, when our ditches are not able to stream. But that's how we'll be able to fund it, uh, we'll make half a payment, uh, we'll make half a payment this year, and half a payment next year. So with that being said, I open it up for discussion.
Well, you said we might have, but you know, we didn't come to that final conclusion that year. I know we suggested, I think that's a good idea, but we didn't really come to that conclusion yet, that we might, yeah. Am I right?
Personally, we made the decision to purchase the tractor, and then we make the determination on how we're gonna purchase.
Right. Pay that, with, with the money, with the COVID- nineteen, take them first. We had made that decision on that, we had voted on it, I know you. So, but what I'm saying, why you put it out there?
What?
Yeah.
Well, I think on last, on, on last, on last week, when we were here, I think, uh, we, we went over about the, the tractor and, and what the urgency of it was, and we discussed the different prices, and I think you, you were kind of late coming in, so therefore, we had kinda already went over some stuff. And, um, we talked about the two sidearms, getting one from one place, and then we didn't wanna get the tractor from one place, and then you put the sidearm on that one from another place, and then the trip is saying that you, you bought two different place, two different, uh, parts from different places, and then I think we came up, uh, you know, we talked about it, and we discussed about, you know, the different prices, and for the mayor to go and try to find how much it would be for the sidearm to come from the same place, so we wouldn't have. So, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know whether, but we, we kinda discussed, you know, a, a lot of this that we talked about at the beginning.
No, yeah, we did, he did, he went over that, what I'm saying, and we levelled it, but it comes to a conclusion on how much we, you know, you have to go on.
Right, but this one we hit nothing.
You have to all go on, but it ain't have the concrete, that's what I'm saying, how many concrete on, how much we gonna pay on the tractor?
Correct, that's my rec, that's why I wanted to let you know, this is the recommendation that I'm giving, that we do what we can, get this, uh, tractor now.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we submit our recommendation, especially that, uh, tractor from Sun South.
Moving seconded, is there any further discuss? All those in favor, there is no more discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the opinion of the chair, ayes have it, the motion carries. Item number two, twenty-two, twenty-two severe weather preparedness tax, preparedness tax holiday. This is something that comes up every year, here, um, it's a tax, it's a tax holiday, severe weather preparedness items to the radio, weather radios, and flashlights, or whatever else that can be used. Uh, typically, uh, this is the time of year that it comes, so it is the council's pleasure.
Due to, uh, we already paid tax holiday for schools, uh, supplies, that, uh, I would suggest, in my opinion, that we do not, uh, accept it, the, uh, tax, uh, holiday.
And it doesn't actually charge the city or the citizens anything, it's basically giving them a break on a certain day, right?
On a day for certain pieces of equipment, but just like school tax holiday is just for paper and pencils and that type thing, this would just be for flashlights and BOs and whatever else you buy, which we don't sell a lot of in that.
Well, I think we should go ahead and pass it. The end birthday, it might be one person out there, two bikes get into there, it's probably.
Thank you, guys, we'll, we'll, uh, take it under a, uh, entertain a motion, nobody's made a motion yet.
I'll still move.
Okay, it's been moved to accept the weather holiday. It's been moved and seconded to accept the weather holiday for twenty-twenty-two severe weather preparedness. All those, is there any other discussion? Alright, we'll move into a vote, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nope.
In the opinion of the chair, ayes have it, the motion carries. Item number three, uh, surplus vehicles. Item number three, surplus vehicles. Been working in conjunction with the Tus, the Tuscoosa County, um, Commission, and some individuals with the Tuscoosa County Commission to try to get some vehicles for our street sanitation department. Um, we came, we did come upon, uh, some vehicles that we'll be able to potentially use. I have vetted those vehicles, one vehicle is a Ford Ranger, um, and they are asking, uh, thirty-eight hundred dollars for a two thousand and eight Ford Ranger. Uh, and then there's also a Dodge Durango that they have for sale, and they're asking five hundred dollars for the Dodge Durango. Both of these, these, uh, couched to, uh, immediately, especially within our street sanitation department, where we're having some transportation issues. I did not have a chance to check the Crown Vic, so I do not wanna go with those at this time, so I'll wait, uh, for that recommendation. But I do make the recommendation that we go forth with the thirty-eight hundred dollar purchase of the two thousand and eight Ford Ranger from the Tuscoosa County, uh, County Commission, and also the five hundred dollar Dodge Durango from the Tuscoosa County Commission as well. Uh, is there, uh, any discussion?
Yeah. You're the one that go drive a vehicle and check them out, and see if they, that will go head gasket or trap it to shipping out good, or why you did?
Yes.
So, that's where you going.
The vehicle we checked, they were vetted, for the price that we can get the vehicle for is what we need and what we can get right now. So, that, that's my, that's my recommendation, that's, that's, that's what we do.
But what I'm saying, I know, uh, you said before that they might can't look in it, but I think we need one of our guys to come look at it too, to make sure that, to tell them to read it.
Thank you, I, I know vehicles, I'm a mechanic, my mom too, I can tell if oil is leaking around the head gasket, if it's oil that's dripping on the fan, I very well aware how to do that, and again, this truck is thirty-eight hundred dollars with less than a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. So, my recommendation is that we make the purchase for this vehicle, we're not gonna find another, uh, at this, at this particular time, I am working on other areas, try to find some lower-priced vehicles, so that way we can afford, uh, but at this time, that's my, that's the recommendation, and we've been working on this for, for a few months now.
Well, then you become a mechanic. Well, I'm just saying, I know my car, I drive trucks every day, but if we gonna spend any money, we need to check it out thoroughly, or meet, cook it, man. While we can go look at it, to make sure. So, we don't need to be spending no money, we buy some, get a head with that road any quick.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other, uh, comments?
Yeah, could we just? Thirty-one hundred is an inch, man, for that, it was, it was, it was good steel. But I, no, it, it, it was a great price for that vehicle, it is. But, uh, could we just have somebody, you say you need to have somebody take it out? Okay.
Possibility to make sure that we are fiduciarily responsible and physically conservative with the funds that we use, so we are spending the taxpayers' dollars wisely. I would not make purchases that will impede us from that path, as long as I sit in the seat.
Okay, let me ask you this, it is. It, it, it is, right, thirty-one hundred dollars, it is, right?
It's a used truck.
Yes, it's a, it is, right.
Two thousand and eight Ford Ranger from the Tuscaloosa County Commission's office.
Yeah. So, that's what I'm saying, it'd be best in the long run, I think we should put this off with, to the next council to have somebody to check it out. But, you know, karma kept us in the butt, you get it, on the way home and stop, you know? So, can we just check it out, can we just, uh, tape it in for two weeks, the next council, please? Do I make?
It's my, you can, you can make that motion, if that's what you would like. Is that, is that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, to tape it in, to the next council meeting, on this vehicle.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion, I do have some discussion. Uh, we've been waiting on this for the last six months, trying to get a vehicle. Free department is in need of vehicles right now. This vehicle is running, a mechanic has looked at it, their mechanic has looked at it, I have looked at it. I think I'm a decent judge of if something will make it down the road or not. And, again, a lot of work has been put in to get to this point. And now, to ask our workers to continue to pile in the truck, one truck, uh, or our mute, uh, is unfair to them, especially when we have some options, even if it is a temporary option, nobody expects it to go three hundred miles. Um, but I am expecting I run the city of Aliceville, and that's what we need for sure. So, that's, that's my, that's my discussion.
Well, why you wanna hook thing go, look at, one of the, the council member, in the truck? Check it out too?
If the council member, you can go, you could have went, we've known this since when the Packer came out on Friday, you could have, uh, not council, uh, Mayor Wynder, I will go to this. Can you take me, and I would be more than glad, I respond to text messages, I respond to phone calls. Nobody asks, nobody texts, so that's where we are today.
And further discussion, like you said, we've been, we've been on this, and, and we, we, we've stated this about these cars, and, and I, I just have to go along, you know, with the mayor. I mean, we've been to the point, and we, we've gotten here, and he's brought it to us numerous times about these cars. And I mean, no said anything about, look at a car, or do anything, and now we get here, you know, and it is just not, just not professional. I mean, he, he's been bringing this, I don't know, at least to me. And if you wanted to go look at the car, you, you, I mean, he's not the good man, you know? You could have asked him, could you go and look at the car, I mean?
Uh, I'm gonna listen to you. First thing I wanna clear up, it's a used vehicle. Nobody but God can tell you that a used vehicle could come out of Tuscoosa, or sell out of it, there's no way you gonna look. It's used. It's used. I'm gonna get it home. Anything can happen to any vehicle. We sell a little different, print and wax down and wash and everything. I don't identify a lot. It don't make no difference. There's no way I know one. I can go get it. And it runs just pretty down the road like dog and quit. It's, you see, it's a car. It's used. But new vehicle quit too. A new vehicle quit, you call one, they're coming to you. But that's why this. And, uh, I, it's just, we don't make the same, then they get down the road, y'all put the kid. So what, what, I don't see them sitting. And, and we doing it, but everybody got, but if you, they quit, quit tomorrow, quit, quit coming home and quit over two years. We, we quit, quit looking at the negative side instead of going run. We always, we, we focused on the negative side of the ball, but we not focusing on the side that could, could last us a while in the self hour. Plus, we got had to treat it right when we get here. I mean, the workers got had to treat it right, but they need to do to keep it up. And you can't blame quitting being there. If we don't do, we.
A mayor, I mean, what happened from this point? I mean, if you table it for two weeks? I mean, is it gonna be there or thirty hundred, five hundred dollars? I mean.
They gave us a timeframe. They gave us thirty days. It started back in September. And once I got the information, I passed it on to the council. And so, uh, but again, I want to vet it to make sure. And then now, uh, that was vetted and brought to the council. So, um, I'm not sure if the thirty days are gonna follow then that council meeting, which is only twenty, something, twenty seventh, I believe, twenty seventh, twenty eighth. So it could be there until it's not there. But if it's not there, then we're back to the drawing board and nothing.
Just that's me.
Yeah, we can do a special thing to call. Investigate, investigate.
So can I ask, uh, Councilman, how long do you think it'll get out?
I can go cry a little bit. You go come?
When you gonna cry?
You go with?
Yeah.
You just tell me where to go and what it's like there in Tuscoosa. I can go look.
They said cry.
Yeah, I ain't got a work for that.
That's what you got a motion?
There's a motion on the floor. You have a motion on the.
We're discussing now.
Yeah.
Alright.
So, uh, make a motion for.
It's already a motion. Alright, well, it sounds, uh, can anybody say anything? Alright, uh, there's, uh, we're moving to a vote. All those in favor of the most was table, uh, the item until Councilman Wilkins and Councilman Lou opportunity to look at the vehicle.
If it's just to table it.
That's the table. Okay. I want to table it definitely. So you have a date that you would put on it?
Uh, you said two weeks gonna be too late? Maybe, maybe not.
If we, no, we, we look at it Friday, like y'all discussed. We look at it Friday. We'll come back next week.
Okay, okay. A week. So that's give us a gap, give us a gap before then.
Okay, we've been motion on the floor to table before. I tabled this item before especially. I'll be in that one. Uh, all those have been on my saying aye. And if, and if, any opposed, any independent check eyes? Now we move into, uh, uh, water drainage that, um, we've had, uh, some water issues. We're not immune to those all across the state that have water issues. Uh, one of the things that we're trying to do is make sure that fix the issue that we're addressing it from, not just looking at dishes, but, uh, part of the COVID nineteen money is to be allowed to use for infrastructure improvement. Uh, want to do stuff with our infrastructure improvement. Allow our engineering firm to come in and make sure that, uh, correct. We've been in contact with their firm through the, uh, our way, uh, of Mr. Brisk for a marketing. Uh, and they did a presentation in the work session, um, to help with the drainage in one bad particular spot, which is over by the railroad, um, park where it's fifth avenue, I believe. That's, that's, um, and that's, that'll be where this study takes place. Uh, in order to try to get us started, um, and to try to get us a, uh, a kind of place to go, uh, we would like to authorize them with a, with the, doing a water drainage study. So that way we'll be able to understand the better flows of the water. It's also give us a diagram of what to do, um, to help fix the water problem and then to give us a course or a plan of action. Uh, this does not include any actual work. This is what's the design, uh, or the work process gonna take. This will help us when we look for grants. Uh, we can say that, hey, we had a study done and this is what is needed. And those grant funds will be more friendly to give us, um, some things, uh, if we've already got some earnest money put in as far as this study goes. Uh, we wanted to put a cap on it and of course this money will come from our COVID nineteen, uh, money. Uh, and we put a cap on it of ten thousand dollars. So that way we don't get to spending more than, uh, more than that amount if we can reach up to that. And again, this is infrastructure, um, and that COVID nineteen can be used. But with that being said, is there any discussion at this time? No discussion. Uh, I entertain motion to approve J M and S to do the study for the water drainage in the city of Aliceville on Fifth Street, uh, through the Fifth Rain. Been motioned it. They've been motioned this segment to, uh, approve this, uh, water drainage study with a cap of ten thousand dollars coming to team funds. Uh, there any other discussion? Not, we're moving to a vote. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, independent check eyes have here. Item number five. Uh, I know the review board, uh, one of the things that we're gonna, that we're gonna implement and why I talked to the chief earlier about this, uh, in our, was a community, uh, where, rather a citizen review board. Uh, that citizen review board would be selected, um, to review any reports that come in, uh, about it. To make sure that, and to give us a recommendation, give myself a recommendation as a council to know which direction, uh, they recommend that we go. Uh, citizens review board would be picked from some individuals put in, uh, for this position. Uh, it will be highly selective, uh, uh, to make sure that the fair and equitable. Uh, but I just wanted to announce that and that will be a board that's, uh, that we're, that I'll be, uh, that we'll be establishing. Uh, if you're interested in being a part of the citizen review board, uh, we will have access. So that way you can, uh, fill it out and some. Any questions about that?
But, uh, I'm, I'm in, I'm in.
I'm, I'm only looking for three at this time. And this, this is a mayor appointed board, so it's just, it's just a board that.
Right.
Appointed by, I must say, I just wanted to announce to you. I think we should have one. That's a good idea. That's a good idea. Alright, thank you.
As you say, uh, would there be a lot, are there any like qualification or would there be any stipulation that they would have?
Yes, we, we have qualification at law enforcement, our ex-law enforcement, so that way you, that way they can have that perspective. Uh, we would, we would like somebody who has some experience on some boards. Uh, I would prefer that they all be, uh, you know, local individuals, uh, to come from this area so they know the dynamics of the city. Uh, but someone who's diverse has a, uh, has an open mindset, um, so that way they can fairly and equally judge individual, not individual, but really the report. Cause it's not about the, that, that, and they'll back around myself, dealing with personnel. And then, uh, I'll be with the chief, of course, about the chief. And then we'll, we'll, uh, we'll go. This is just a, another independent part. So that way we can show that we're being inclusive throughout all the community.
When you say your voice, I mean, you gotta make sure that they understand, but we dealing with something that we're working on. We may have complaints. Uh, against, against the police department. You know, you don't want nobody on the board that feel like they come in and tell us how to run our job when we have state law that we have to run. If you're not careful, you were went into that where somebody that's not on board would try to get on board and try to tell the police.
This is just for complaint. This is, and again, it's a different operation. There's some complaints that we have not had a response to because there's still open investigations and that's the reason why they won't get a response. There's some that are pending, uh, responded to and will get responded to because that's a open and shut duty. But this is just for complaint. This is not for open investigations or stuff that's contestable in court. Anything like that. This is specifically dealing with the incident at that time, but they'll be giving care guidance about what that is. And I'll issue out. Alright, that being said, we're moving to council. Had opportunity to view the bills. It's about the bills that's presented. I've been most, it's been motioned a second to pay the bills that's presented. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, check eyes have, most carries. Now we have our departmental reports, police department. No report from the police department, street department. Alright, no report from the street department, uh, fire department. No report, yeah, no report, chief. Alright, thank you. And this, at the, uh, this as an announcement, uh, this for the fire department, the next meeting, at our next council meeting, we do plan to make an appointment to the, uh, fire chief, as a fire chief. We have intended on doing it this meeting, but we wanted to make, we have some things that we want to make sure we review carefully. And we'll make that determination at the next council meeting, which will be the last Wednesday of this month. But we will, uh, I'm gonna call you chief, but you might, you might, you know, uh, until the twenty seventh of October. Um, for, we do have a report on that. Our chamber commerce director has proved it. He is, uh, he has resigned his post. Uh, uh, will be resigned effective the end of this month. Uh, we do have an application that has been, uh, posted online and a job description. So if you're interested in that position, uh, description, it does, uh, it is there. Um, and we are accepting applications until the twenty eighth to twenty eighth of October. Alright, are there any questions about that? Alright, that being said, now we'll open the floor for any member of the public who would like to have anything to say at this time.
Please stand and use a microphone. On October the first, I had asked, uh, Winston Bishop at the high school, would it be alright by John, the, uh, parade? He said, yeah. Cause he didn't know. I didn't know. You think I've been running up and down the road and didn't know that you didn't supposed to be on the highway with a four wheel? Ain't nobody said nothing. I came all the way from city hall. Ain't nobody said a word. Turned the [inaudible] down fourteen. Said, James, meet me around to the police station. I said, okay. I get around the police station. Tell them, they don't pull it up on me. The officer pulled it up on me with his hand, rushed to me, hand on the butt of the truck. What reason? What reason? My hand was stung on the [inaudible] of the four wheel. What reason you got a toy? We were there the fourth. No, no, that's himself. And I told him, Chief Jones said, meet him. He said, then about taking my four wheel. The officer said, he did carry. He taking it. What SOP are you following? It can't be, it gotta be a PD. It gotta be MDD. Cause it don't make sense. This man had no reason. That man came up on me and stood up [inaudible] with his hand on the butt of his, just his eyes were black, black. That's death, man. That's death. Anytime you stand up over a man with your hand on your gun and your eye black.
Mr. Bishop, would you please hand me the mic?
You had to win it. And I thank you.
They got no, they heard it.
Mr. Bishop has filed a police, a police complaint form. It is pending response. Thank you, Mr. Bishop, addressing it both in a public forum as well as in writing. We thank you and you will get a response from me in writing to you about that incident. They have to say at this time.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I just rose to see if there was any member of the city council that have any question about the, uh, flea market downtown.
Of course, I got it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I heard you think so.
Thank you.
I heard you got good food.
Thank you so much. We do. No, thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public who has something they would like to say at this time? You want to speak? Thank you, McConnaughton. Sorry, I recognize a public official. Um, and on some, uh, of council members, y'all got anything? Council member, uh, Wilkins.
Keep doing what we do. Y'all here in Aliceville, just be safe and go out and visit these stores and buy local if you could, if you can, buy local. Enjoy what we got.
The incident is not gonna be reviewed in an open meeting. If you have something, you can address it to me in a, in a executive session or but I will not address anything to them in an open meeting about individuals with their names.
Um, if I'm not out of order, I ask you one question.
Yeah, go ahead. Go right ahead.
If I'm not out of order, I just want to ask a question. It's really about the decoration here. Okay, I mean, when you go to Rose, it's very beautiful. So if you got a little money, why can't we make Aliceville look beautiful too? I mean, we had it for two years. I don't know, maybe three. I don't know. But I think, I think it's pretty ugly. You know, I'm not saying, I mean, it's, I mean, this, it's not my part to say it, but I, I think it's, it's really ugly. It's, you know, we could do better than this. I mean, we could. The citizens have, have, they get in it with it so that it looks beautiful too. Yeah, because I mean, I don't have to tell you cause you already know it. You been up there. It's, it's, it's real good. And I'm really shamed about it. And I'm really shining back at you. And we just, we don't have anything to pump, to put on street, on street.
Cause today, in the, if, if you go in Miller Town, and as you speak of beautification, you see the building next to the hall. That looks horrible for our town. I mean, what will be done and what can be done about that building? I mean, you're having, um, festivals in town and to me, when you go down through there and you have a festival, that, that really doesn't a good look for our town. So I don't know if something can be done about it or, you know, but it's just, like you said, beautification, we need to do a little bit better.
I agree with saying about the way you said it just kept up now. Uh, it has been said, you know, they have equipment and equipment and, uh, but it's still the same. It is a mess. I walked through here. It is embarrassing when my family come in here. I try to clean on my corner myself. But it is too, it's beautifying, but cleaning up, that's the main thing. And there is a big deal.
Council member, uh,
Um, thank you all for, uh, coming out and, and, and sharing, sharing, uh, what you, uh, very, I mean, we, we, that's what we want. Sometimes if you never say anything, if you never come out, you know, you, you never know, you know, and, and, and who, who wants somebody to tell them that this is not, this is not fair. It don't feel good. Not saying that it ain't true. I received a call. I received a call. Uh, I don't know. I think it was the other day, this week, I know. And it was from one of the members, I think she's the head in Aliceville, uh, Miss, I don't, I, Miss Sunny, Sunny, I thought. Uh, she, she called and she expressed, uh, she expressed about some things that happened in the city, uh, concerning, uh, the pumpkins that they, uh, put out vandalism that happened in the city to the pumpkins. Miss Sunny and, and Miss Sunny and the rest of the ladies are doing what they can with what they have. I expressed to Miss Sunny, she asked me was that mine, uh, did no ma'am, I said, but still, it's Aliceville. And I told Miss Sunny, it's, it's a lady, she's not here tonight, but she expressed her concern doing something. See, sometimes we say what we want dead. The hand to help get it dead. You know what I'm saying? And, 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 and not to just, you know, say, you know, Miss, Miss Sunny Collins, but I'm saying her name because she said that she takes pride in Aliceville. She, she, she wants to beautify Aliceville. She wants the better for it. So I said, Miss Collins, have you asked any of the people? Have you, have you? She said, yes, some say that they gonna do something, but show up. That's not Miss Collins' fault. Aliceville is your city. Aliceville is your city. So I would suggest to you, if you want your city, your flowers, your your, your, to, to look like this. Hey, get on the phone. I'm sure Mayor has Miss Sunny Collins' number. Those that want to be a part of the beautification project to make Aliceville look beautiful. Hey, get, get Miss Collins a call and let's make Aliceville what it can be. With your, with my help, we can do it.
I want, I had, um, that, uh, I would, yeah, I'm gonna appreciate everyone coming tonight. I hope everybody continue to come and, um, and value your opinion. We, we set a knee there. This is what we, we work for you. We was elected to work for you. So your concern is our concern. And, uh, I like to encourage, uh, I like to see you quickly. Yes, ma'am. Um, I appreciate you coming. That place is kept well, grown, and you know, and draw our peoples from that I'm assuming and sure that they spend money, not just there. Gas, everything is all around, kind of like, you know, but we all deserve, we got themself, they're walking a little, you know, uh, we are real fleets. And what you're telling outside, why some of them go to food back from there? You know, they grossing gas by over here, shopping. But, uh, please value your opinion. Please come and invite anyone that's come.
Okay, what I'm saying is, okay. What, what I'm, what I'm really saying is, okay, like you have a board, right? You have a board right there. That's your board right there. Okay. When you see these people out here doing this decoration and everything, well, I'm thinking those are the people that's picked for the city. Okay? But like I say, if I knew that I could come in anytime and say, I would like to help, cause I like to see these pretty flowers and stuff like that too. Okay. Get some papers. Get them out. Whoever wants to help, sit it, get the paper and then we can get together because we know not, we do not because we know not. So that's why I go.
I be on the corner cleaning all the.
No, no, speak up.
Yeah. On the corner cleaning. And I've been complaining about it because beauty and flowers, if it's filthy, it's still not going to look well. You know, so there's a difference. All these flowers and stuff over the place, you know, I, I've been complaining and paper, I walk through the city and look like horse renewal up, up on the and, and I, I see it and I've been complaining about it. But you can put all the flowers you want, but if it's filthy, it's still filthy.
Yes, ma'am. Well, again, we thank everybody for coming tonight. Uh, I'll, I'll address a couple of things really quickly. Um, as far as as far as the flowers and beautification, I will also say, uh, the, the, that garden club, they are exclusively by themselves, um, outside of the city's assistance. We provide, uh, money for flowers, the flowers that go in the hang. Um, they probably spent out of their budget about fifteen hundred dollars, um, to help keep the upkeep of that. Um, this year we budgeted some money for flowers, um, because again, it's the first time we've had an opportunity to do a budget with beautification. Uh, also we've had a number of issues for a long time. Uh, we, we're picking up trash. If you see a specific area that need to get picked up, Mr. Pro, uh, will be more than willing to send a crew out to get that paper up, uh, because, you know, we had someone called in, for example, on Seventeenth Street. After we had cut the grass, there was some paper out there. They called my cell. Yeah, that's what the paper gone. So if you know where the paper is, we'll get it. Now, we can't stop nobody from throwing it out. Our police can't ride behind. We can get trash. But if you see a specific area where it needs to get done, we'd be more than willing, more than happy to take care of it. Also, as far as beautification up, um, one of the things that we're doing, it takes a little time to clean up. All right. Off downtown. If you notice, our sidewalk is not white. It's not brown anymore. It's not black anymore. It's white in the downtown area. Why is that? We bought a pressure washer. We bought a, a machine so that way we clean the ground. So that way, if you look downtown by the museum or on the other side, you will see that we're getting there and we're trying to clean up the edges of town. The edges of town, as you're going out, you can actually see the curb now. We've got our guys to go make the edge so grass stops growing over the side of the curb. So we're taking some time to doing it. Rome was not built in a day. These are issues that have precluded ourselves and we're not using that for an excuse. But we're gonna make it happen. Specifically, over there, that building is owned by Mr. Bruce, who owns the park store. Uh, we've sent a letter, um, to them about that area and we see what it is now. So if you, John, you citizen, want to go speak with that individual and are accompanied, then you can, if you want of that particular property. And we're not just saying him, but we've sent letters all across the city about different areas that overgrown that need to be cut. Some of the people stay in town. Some of the people don't stay and cleaned up. So it's not that we're not doing it or not being proactive. But if you see something that needs to be done or said, three, seven, three, six, six, one, two, zero, five, three, seven, three, six, six, one, one. Call City Hall. Our staff is more than willing to help you with that procedure. All right. Again, hey, love you to come back. Please feel free to come back. Don't just come back, um, tonight. Come back every other night as well. All right. Because we love to have input. That's part of the reason. Been moved. Second, all those in favor, let it be known by saying I. Any opposed, the opinion of the eyes have, most carries. Thank you for coming.